James Letton, he was asking for a refund of his taxes. Taxes. And at the time, he evidently maybe did not know that required a survey. So he is choosing not to keep the property and wants refund of his payment. He, is he not here? He's not, okay, I'm on up. If you use that mic there if you want.
Hello, hello, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I actually didn't choose to not purchase the railroad property. Uh, it was deemed invalid by the judge. Walker, Mary Walker, whatever. Okay, and, um, so I believe the, the tax due on the property was seven thirty-two thirty-six in order to make that a valid sale. So, um, throughout, um, the auction bid, uh, the property sold to me for one thousand dollars. I paid one thousand dollars for that property and then, um, going through Mary Walker and, um, the lawyer told me to pay the taxes up to the day of, uh, the court hearing with the judge, which was another, um, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents. I now have eleven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents invested in the property that was deemed invalid. And I got a refund of the, uh, the tax sale. The original seven thirty-two thirty-six was what I assumed that was required by the county to, uh, make the tax sale valid, to pay off the taxes on the property. So somehow or another, I got paid seven thirty-two thirty-six and not the rest of it.
Yeah, that's what your lawyer suggested though, right? You sent into the auditor?
Um, I don't have a, I don't have a clue on why or how or when, but that is where I'm at on it.
Okay, so what he's asking for is the additional four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents?
Yes.
To equal out that total that he's already stated, eleven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents?
Yes.
Has anybody had any experience with this before or just, um, common practice?
I've bought, I've bought stuff at the tax bill several times. You know, they tell you to do your homework, but we did it all work and it come out invalid on the court, so I'd say, you know, it's those of him.
Okay. That's a form of motion, Mike?
I, I will, I will say, I think this is also clear, Commissioner.
Okay.
I talked to Mr. Tankersley and told me this is about all I could really do was go to the front of the meeting.
So can we make this a new extension?
Couldn't issue that.
Motion?
Yeah, you guys can motion.
Okay, from this from the, uh, commissioners, do we have a motion to approve this payment? Four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go.
I can go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question now. What does that mean? Can we no longer sell this property?
So it came back.
Okay, but then we need to add what we've paid, put into it as well as the tax burden, right?
Well, the commissioners could take it back and get a commissioner's deed and then sell it that way. But if they call it invalid, I don't know how that, how you.
How, how is, I don't, okay, well, I'm gonna have to dig into why it's invalid, but we don't need to take up meeting time.
Well, this gentleman, we were asking for him to pay for the survey. He didn't want to. Okay, Nathan?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, apologies in advance, got a lot of ground to cover here tonight. I will try to go as quickly as possible without running through anything. Stop me if you need me to. Uh, first thing I have for you and included in your packet after the report, email that Kevin Tankersley had sent out and then an email I had sent out in response to that. I am asking that commissioners in the council amend the personnel policies handbook to shift my position from thirty-five hours a week to forty hours. Right now, I have no full-time help, but I'm not asking that for any staff I might have in the future at this moment, just for my position, um, so that I am better able to manage the forthcoming courthouse project without, uh, sloughing on my day-to-day CDC duties. And if we get to the point at which the construction project has come to an end and we determine that based on workload, staffing in the office at the time, whatever considerations, it makes sense to go back to thirty-five, that's fine. I just know, as I explained in the email, that I have already blown through my modest overtime budget for this year, when typically I don't spend more than a third to maybe a half of it. What time I have taken off this year has come largely out of carryover PTO from last year that I didn't use or from comp time I have accrued, when I've accrued it instead of paid overtime, so that five and a half months through the year, I've got twenty and a half of my twenty-two overtime, or PTO days still available. Kevin had brought this, as you noted in my, in the email, to my attention, that he thought something should change and we sort of hashed out different alternatives, uh, trying something as messy as ten ninety-ninety me for courthouse-related stuff, but that would create confusion if, you know, I was doing courthouse stuff during the middle of the day, that sort of thing. And I thought that this would probably be the cleanest way to do it. Change my hours for the duration and then change it back, uh, if and when we decide that's a reasonable thing to do. Um, masking if you approve it, that it would go into effect on Sunday, the twenty-sixth, which would be the first day of pay period fifteen, so just shy of two weeks from now. And the additional total cost for pay, taxes and perf for the remainder of this year would be somewhere around forty-seven hundred dollars. If we did this, then for next year, it would be a total increase of about ninety-eight hundred dollars, notwithstanding any pay increases that employees for next year. So that's number one, asking if, what the commissioners and council's pleasure is on that proposal.
From council perspective, and I don't know who goes first here, but I'd like to make a motion that council approves it.
All right, we have a motion and a second by the council to approve the handbook policy change as presented by Mr. Ordor, the prosecutor. We'll appropriate the money in our next meeting and all. Any further discussion? Correct.
And, and next year?
It's a motion to change the handbook. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to change the handbook.
Well, it, it goes into next year, but then could be revisited when the courthouse project is finished. Yeah.
Barring some catastrophic unforeseen circumstances, it will be done before the end of twenty twenty-three. So I, unless we decide at the end that enough other work going on in the office to keep me that way, we should be able to do it before or at the end of twenty twenty-three to switch back if we decide that's necessary.
I mean, and from a, from a county economic standpoint, you know, in my mind, this is pretty much a no-brainer because if, when we were looking prior to doing the project, looking at outsourcing it, most of them came back and they wanted a percentage of the project, five percent of the project, which weighed over, you know, nine thousand dollars, let's say ten thousand dollars in a year, so. And, and on the other side, as I've often said, and I'll continue to say, anytime a department or man wants to do the work that they need to get done, if they're not on the forty-hour work schedule, that's the first place we. So, um, so that's, that's my opinion. I support this. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passive.
Okay, I would, uh, make that motion, change the handbook.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Is this actually a handbook change? Does the commissioners need to vote?
Yes, it needs approval by both boards.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the list, um, quickly, at least on my end, on ARP funds, you know, county has engaged Baker Tilly to help us to navigate this process and potentially to find related funding opportunities that may present themselves. I don't have a lot to say tonight, uh, but Commissioner Mellon and Councilors Boswell and Thompson and I had a brief call with Jason Semler on Friday morning, just sort of to get our bearings on this before, you know, we have a sense of how much burden is gonna fall on Laura's office, before the conversations start with the two bodies and other stakeholders on how the county wants to spend the money. We just kind of got a huddle in there to see how we need to proceed. I don't know if any of the three of them want to add anything right now. I just want to make you all aware that we are very slowly cautiously moving forward on this.
Let me just update where, you know, the money is currently. No, it was all put into the revenue replacement fund and, uh, second payment was supposed to come twelve months after the first. So, uh, I think it's been applied for and, uh, maybe not five yet, but it is all put into a CD until we begin to spend out of it. I think most of our discussion was kind of restating a lot of the projects that we initially talked about. And I think a big part of this is going to be, uh, what we do with the West Annex as far as trying to put other departments in there, closing the East Annex. But any other comments?
No, I think that brings. Moving on to updates on our construction projects. Justice Center, um, as I believe I've reported in the past, with the homestretch issues we've had to address, um, turnover of the project is officially scheduled for the first of July. Um, our architect, on Thursday, for his punchless walkthrough to addressing any issues that he comes up on in his inspection. Looking at the middle of July for a move-in date that works for both the Circuit Court and the Prosecutor's Office. With construction nearing an end, um, site fencing will come down on Monday. We are still facing some delays on the exterior door hardware, so our superintendent, John Allen, is working with the supplier on a temporary setup to make sure that there are no security concerns with the building in the interim. Landscaping begins tomorrow and they did some utility locates for it today. We are sorting out some miscommunication between the architect, their IT consultants and Rowing regarding power in the IT room in the basement. That, I'm hoping, will be a quick, uh, a quick resolution. Um, I have a number of things that the group technology will need to be doing for us, uh, sort of superficial stuffs, you know, beyond construction, making sure that the courtroom is properly equipped and the court office and the prosecutor office with the IT that they need. We have funds left in our IT line item and contingency to cover that, but that will just about drain the contingency on our side of the project once that is done. However, as of last week at our monthly check-in meeting, Ton and Blank still had a fairly comfortable balance on their side of the contingency, so I'll be working with them to see how much they need to earmark until that building is handed over in case last minute things come up, how much they can shuffle and how much ideally, not that it'll be a whole lot, but that they can return to us to apply towards our first debt service payment. Worst-case scenario, as I reported to commissioners last week, and I don't foresee this happening, but worst-case scenario, if something horrifying is discovered and it's flexibility of about thirty thousand dollars out of professional services appropriation, cover costs without running afoul of the state for maximum project cost. I didn't think that was the case, but there's one thing that we paid for out of the bond that was necessary, but does not count towards our project costs from the state's perspective. They said, I think there's enough in their contingency that we should not have any concerns there, but worst-case scenario, we're good to go. That's all on the Justice Center, any questions before I move along? Courthouse project, uh, you've all received emails from me with the two draft options. The architect has put together for the floor plans of the courthouse, assigning which office to which space. Received a significant amount of feedback from the steering committee and from the most likely future office holders. Uh, we had a steering committee meeting last week where we had a lot of discussion, raised more questions than we answered. I've sent those to the architect for further consideration. Um, I'm gonna be setting up a couple of individual meetings on specific issues, like I'm gonna ask the sheriff to set up a meeting to talk about some security concerns with the IT people working with the architects. And then we're going to have a follow-up steering committee meeting either very end of this month, first week of July, with the architects on hand. And I am hoping that at the end of that meeting, we will know who's going where. We won't have every single minor design detail hashed out, but all of the big stuff that we need to know with Ton and Blank to develop an updated budget estimate to get ready for the bid process. Courthouse program.
What about our files that everybody's concerned about?
So I, I've had, I've had conversations with the clerk. I've had conversations with the department heads, you know, the audit. We had that meeting in Teresa's office. Were in that conversation? Almost everybody. No, a couple of weeks ago. I know the clerk was there, the treasurer was there, and the assessor was there. Thought you were someone, maybe you weren't there. My, my mistake. I've had a conversation with most of them. They're all looking into what might be the best options for their offices. We can roll costs either of software or hiring a person or both for that purpose into the bond issuance if we, if we decide to. I believe the clerk's office has a special fund that she can use just for that, but other offices may make the most sense to roll into the project costs. Um, and it might be that we have two people or three people all part-time, depending on individual workloads and funding sources, so the clerk might hire someone directly for that, and then I might hire one person to do the rest of the departments. That specifics, we haven't ironed out yet, but that is ongoing conversation, ongoing research on the part of the department heads.
Are, are any of those like protected files where other people shouldn't be copying them?
Or shouldn't be what?
Transferring them to a electronic file?
I don't know, there are some, those are out of the question. I know that the clerk in particular has some court files that are, they're not allowed, they're almost not allowed to touch once they're filed away without having somebody from the state here. And, uh, Clerk Bany and I have had the conversations about acknowledging that and making sure that we have special, uh, plans to handle those in a way that keeps her compliant, but that is an ongoing conversation.
Uh, could you use your microphones, please?
I was asking Laura about, you know, in her officer, our files.
Mm-hmm.
And then my question was, okay, does it matter who that person is that transfers the files? Our, your file?
I would think that any employee, uh, would have to be vetted and, and you would have to hire someone who would not breach that confidentiality. Everything would be the same as with that.
Okay. Okay. Her comment was that, you know, we can sign confidentiality statements if somebody else outside does that. Okay, sorry.
No problem. Any other questions with the courthouse? Okay, then very quickly, um, the architects have been working on updating the existing plans we had from last year on the work release facility in the Justice Center basement. Had a number of quick conversations with them and the sheriff and Stephen Mundie about specific needs and that, and so that design work is coming along. And then, on a related note, um, so for those of you who don't know, every other with manufacturing partners in the community and then manufacturing extension partnership, it's, we do special presentation in time, you know, it's indirectly what led to our getting the grant seven years ago or whatever for the advanced manufacturing classes at West Center. Our August meeting is going to be dedicated to work release and we're gonna have personnel from the sheriff's department and/or the prosecutor's office, the courts, everyone who can make it and who needs to be part of that conversation to kind of give them an update on all, how all that will work and some related programs like the treatment court and start building some closer relationships so that when the sheriff's department gets a call from factory A, they can put names with faces and start working on those qualifying inmates that were doing the best employers that are participating. And the last thing, and Gary's here in case any, he needs to say anything, you have any questions, um, because we have these architects already working with us and because Ton and Blank is already here in town, um, commissioners approved contra Luminant Roland to or the roof of this front part of this building here. It, it's not a super in-depth process, most likely, fingers crossed, but it will cost enough that we are legally required to have. I don't think it'll cost enough that we have to bids, we will, I think we'll be in the slot based on what Ton and Blank has told me where we will just have to solicit bids directly from X number of qualified The one caveat is that if we get Ton and Blank does an analysis and finds that, or into the ceiling and finds that there is structural damage to the trusses, it could get a lot messier. John Allen, our by his boss, even though he's not part of the roofing team, just to do a cursory inspection, check there, over in that corner, and then over in the back bathroom where they've had leaks, and he did not see anything in the ceiling or on the roof that he thought would indicate that we think it'll just be tearing down, possibly to the metal base, possibly to the trusses and redoing what's up there. And so the architects are gonna look at what the, if there needs any changes to the elevations, what the best material for this building will be, and then we will put it out to bid by way of invitation. Um, Gary, do you want to add anything?
Any timelines, Nathan? Their timeline for it?
I, I don't have one right now. Uh, that'll be gonna depend on how quickly Ton and Blank can send their roofers down here to do that inspection. Last thing, uh, some CDC-related, some actual economic development-related stuff. Um, first couple of updates, uh, as you know, end of last year, we updated and adopted our new strategic plan. So far, first year, six months of this year, the primary ways we've been working on implementation of that are our partnership with the community foundation focusing on downtown development, housing and broadband, and then doing a better job of engaging our agricultural sector than we historically have. And that right now is mainly through the regional ag strategy grant project that we started last year. Uh, I've been doing a number of interviews with the survey that Purdue put together for us with local ag partners and supporting ag partners. So, um, Adam Lamer in his trucking for agriculture, we met with him. I've been to Bootland Popcorn and Eden Valley Farms, uh, been, met with Maurice out at the dairy, and I think I've done three or four others, and we've got four or five more that we are scheduling over the next week or so. Uh, very interesting insights, uh, obviously internet is something that keeps coming up, internet service in rural areas. Um, but looking forward to what kind of results we get in the county and over the six county region. Uh, the Main Street group in Winemac, we are in the process of re-establishing that through this, and as you know, we were recently certified as a broadband-ready community. The housing consultants have completed a market potential assessment that is going to be publicly unveiled and discussed at a housing symposium in late July, and there will be further information on the specifics, time, date, location coming to all of you. Think it's gonna be some really interesting information and I hope we have a really good turnout of people who can make it. Related to housing, I had mentioned in an email I sent out, the Hoosier Homes Down Payment Assistance Program. It doesn't come at any cost to the county, um, it's in partnership with the Indianapolis Housing Agency, it's a fairly new program, is exactly what it says, it's down payment assistance for qualifying would-be homeowners. I am not prepared to discuss that in any detail tonight. I have included in your packet the same, uh, handout that I emailed to you. I would just like, if commissioners in particular are okay with it, the green light to dive into this a little more deeply, be able to come back and say, I think this is a really good complementary project to what we're doing or not.
Yeah, I ended a couple of those initial meetings, I think it's, um, something we need is to let anything go out to different, uh, businesses and see what the affordability range is and that's the kind of house that we need to build or make available.
And that is, some of that has been part of this survey that the consultants have done.
So I would, you need an actual motion or just, I'd say we move forward, is that all right with you guys?
Okay. All right, last thing I have, and it's a big one. Uh, in the last couple of months, a couple of times, I have presented information to you all on possibility of establishing a redevelopment commission in Platte County. Uh, with this housing project going on, we get to the point where we see some real potential for housing development, especially of any scale. Uh, one of the ways we might make it more affordable is to establish a residential TIF district. Might not, might not need that tool, might not need resident, might not need normal TIF, we might see an opportunity where it makes sense. But it's something we don't have access to right now. Since I last presented that to you through a sort of review of current circumstances, looking forward to some of the projects that we have going on and hope to have going on, and then conversations I've had with my executive board, my strategic visioning committee that oversaw the new strategic plan and the CDC as a whole, I have reached the conclusion and gotten the endorsement of such conclusion from all of those people, that rather than of those people, that rather than just looking at the possibility of establishing a redevelopment commission, the time may be right for us to overhaul how the CDC is structured. I outlined that in detail in the three-page proposal I sent in the email and is included in here. But in short, how we would do it is replace the CDC as we currently know it with a handful of statutory development commissions. CDC has no basis in Indiana code. It has set up a resolution, set it up as they saw it. It's a very unique structure in the state of Indiana in that it is entirely publicly funded and I am a county employee, but it has private sector representation. Whereas in a lot of cases, either an economic development office is just government, or it is a nonprofit that gets government funding but also has private membership and private funding. That has pluses and minuses. One of the minuses is that without statutory structure, we don't have access to tools that we may need. We also have sort of cornered ourselves into a situation where fifteen members is very unwieldy. Twice this year already, I've not had quorum at meetings. But it starts to get, starts to risk getting into some heated debates when you start cutting the membership. Who, whom do you cut? You cut the private sector engines of Indiana community and shut them out? Do you cut out the towns who are not paying any membership, any organizational fees like they were supposed to when the CDC was first established? It gets messy. Still don't have the tools, even if we figure out the bright, the right way to shrink it. So what we are proposing, working over the next seven months, six and a half months, so that we could be ready ideally by the first of the year, have this in place, is setting up the redevelopment commission, which is five or seven members. Setting up an economic development commission, which would be used as a review body for tax abatements. And if we ever are in a position to do so, would be the body that would approve issuing economic development revenue bonds, whether for an industrial project or as part of a TIF project in partnership with the redevelopment commission. Third one, wouldn't be a new body. It would just be reactivating our industrial park board. We have not been active in probably five or six years, but it is in place legally. The county cannot sell any of the land in the industrial park that is actually part of the original industrial park gift without that board's approval. We cannot spend any of the $44,000 in the industrial park fund without that board's approval. Gray area, if we could buy new land for develop, industrial park without it or not, but the existing funds and the existing land through Indiana code statutes from 30 years ago have our hands kind of tied on that. And then the last one would be a tourism commission. And that would, if we ever thought it was appropriate, allow us to implement an innkeeper's tax so that we could supplement or if it generated enough, eventually replace economic development income taxes or tourist marketing promotions. And so beyond those tools, what it does, you know, I might have 22 people instead of 15, but it's in multiple smaller boards. And it means that I have people who are in the tourism industry, who are setting and guiding policy regarding tourism, instead of having a manufacturing director of operations being, making tourism policy. Having somebody in, not having somebody who is part of an outdoor recreation tourism business, setting policy for downtown redevelopment. We'd be able to do a better job of aligning people specifically with their strengths, their professional backgrounds, their interests, and focusing policymaking on them. And then what I would propose doing, rather than like having four or more in the future bodies, all responsible for my annual performance evaluation and approving budgets and that sort of thing, restructuring the CDC as sort of a super group of commissions where the president of the tourism commission, president of the redevelopment commission, and the president of the economic development commission and so on, would serve as that role. So there is a body in place to do my annual evaluations, to approve the budget each year, that sort of thing, so that there's still a clear path of accountability and governance. That's a lot, I know. Don't necessarily need, I'm not necessarily asking for a decision tonight, but I'd like to see that we're moving forward because I think that, given the strategic plan, given the issues we have with, and given the lack of access to a lot of tools that could really help us to move the community forward, I think this is the right time. Kathy, Maurice, you've both been in parts of these conversations multiple times. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
I just think it's, it makes a lot of sense. And I've had time to think about it because we've been discussing it in meetings. But I, I really think that it makes a lot of sense. It does put the people who have the skill in, in the right places. And it won't be the same people. We'll be reaching out to other people to be involved in those boards. So, and, and it is, I've, I've worked with boards for not-for-profit organizations my entire professional life. And a 15-member board is just unwieldy. It's unwieldy. It's hard to get a quorum. This gets around that issue and it puts people with skills in the right place. What business do I have being, making decisions about manufacturing? You know, people who are skilled in manufacturing issues need to be on, you know, making those decisions. Same with tourism, same with economic development, all of that. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I support the reconstitution.
I guess, right now you have a council member and a commissioner that's on the board. I presume you'd still be looking, they would set on the main board then?
Yeah, especially, I don't know if it would be both, one or the other. I would decide to depend on how many seats we have on there, how many commissions are participating. But especially, not just because, but especially for time, I would be continuing to do this extracurricular work managing the construction projects. I would want that accountability. You know, might come down to, it may be commissioner or council, maybe both, like I said, depending on if we want to make sure we have an odd number of seats on that, avoid ties, that sort of thing. But I certainly wouldn't want to have that still in place and not have the county government represented. So right now, tax abatement process, and this is something Holly and I have talked about in the past and I'd still like to do is, we don't really have any firm criteria. Some communities do, some don't. But we also don't really have a review body before it gets to the council. I'm like, hey, these guys want to do a tax abatement. Here's the deal. The economic development commission in communities that have them is often that first review board. And they say, yes, Nathan, you should take this to the council with our blessing. Or you can take it to the council, but we're not giving our blessing because we don't think it's a good project, or it's not enough jobs or enough wages, that sort of thing. So there would be a process of review so the council isn't just trusting my word and Joey manufacturer's word that he should get this tax abatement. Oh yeah, you'll still go to the council, but it would be a review board before, yep, take it to the council.
And we did have a committee that served that purpose last time, right?
And that's not something we've, you know, we've ever done because most of them have not been of the magnitude that that has been. But I've always, I've long wanted to adopt some guidelines, even if they're flexible guidelines, to give a little more clarity to the process and have someone besides just me saying, your county council, you should approve this. What's that?
So the other part of this plan, you got down to staffing?
That's long-term. That's, I mean, we'll do it with whatever staff we have, particularly the first year or so. I don't see a lot of additional demand on work until we start implementing projects. But that's just sketching out what I see is staffing might look like as the council becomes more comfortable with adding some staff in the office and by showing that it's needed and that we're making the best use of it. Wanted kind of a sense of what it might look like once it's all in place, one, two, three years down the road.
Right now, you just kind of need a thumbs up. I think you had both representatives supporting it. So.
Yeah, I mean, myself, I, I think it's a good idea. It's definitely something we follow up on and
Do you need a motion? I don't know tonight if that's what you want to do. If you want to, realistically, I would say what we'd need is a motion to give me the green light to work with Kevin on making sure that we do this all by the book as far as setting it up.
From council perspective, so move.
All right. We have a motion to give the CDC director the green light to county attorney. Look at what, what this would look like at the end of the day. Second? All right. We have a motion, the second. Further discussion?
I'd like to know more about it. I'm not 100% sure with what all involves and what is going to cost.
Until we start looking in to actual projects, there's no reason it would cost anything more. Unless, for those boards that allow it, and not all of them do, the council wanted to set stipends for meeting attendance like they do for the plan commission and some of the other boards. But first year, I don't see any reason it would cost anything more than my normal operating budget.
CDC board does not have a stipend now.
In, in my budget proposal that we'll be discussing in August, there is one line item increase related to this. That would be, and only if we are ready to bring in a consultant to help set up a TIF district sort of thing. And if we weren't ready to do that, we wouldn't need to go beyond our normal appropriation.
I agree with that. And Nathan, I actually thought about this a little bit more. Have you loved the support, especially to the CDC, what you're thinking? It's very unwieldy with 15 people. I'm very, this hard, this hard to deserve, that we cannot get 15 community members other than who's here to show up to care about the community, especially a lot of them are employers. But anyway, this is a lot of creation of government. We think it's unwieldy now. We create all these different things. We create a lot of more, I count at least 16 new people that I have built. They're all going to be from the CDC that exists that will allow them to be a board. Can I just say that?
Not likely. It would, it would be new members, like I said, more tailored. So it might be from one of the canoe and kayak livery, somebody on the tourism commission. And it
I just want to feel a lot more individualized impact there.
Well, and that, I think that's one thing you would have with this, is that you're, I mean, we're not just going to go pick somebody off a factory floor and say, hey, be on this. But we're going to be, it's going to be a much broader net, or I should say, much broader area with much smaller nets. So we're going to go put one in the tourism pond, instead of maybe getting somebody who has some tourism interest, but isn't necessarily the one who's on one of those. Whereas we're going to target I don't know that it really is more creation of government. If anything, it's greater democratization of government. Because, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not requesting any more staff than I ultimately, over the next couple of years, would be requesting anyway. It's just, like, if I got the green light to hire a person, what that job description would be tailored to, like one person would be like focused on EDC and the RDC. One person would be on the tourism commission, that sort of thing.
And, and I guess that's what I want to just clarify. I mean, what, all we're, the motion is, if I understand from Kathy, right, is just give Nathan the green light to pursue investigating this, making sure what it would look like if it was approved at a later date. Make sure that it's done correctly. It's not giving him green light to say, we are doing this. This is what it's going to look like starting tomorrow.
It just seems like anytime we do this, it is the green light. And for everything, we can't stop it. I've seen this happen so many times.
Well, if this is progress, then I hope we don't stop it.
Well, and I'm all for progress, but when it costs more than it's, maybe that's what you get, that's where I am from.
And that's a very reasonable, sensible position for somebody in the council to take. But what you're going to, I guess, and other than staffing that I would be requesting over the next couple of years anyway, I don't foresee any new costs right now. But we're going to have access to new tools. And something like TIF, for instance, if the scenario is right and calls for it, what that allows us to do is to fund projects that ideally would add new property value without having to spend a lot of taxpayer money. It would all be the taxpayers in that area repaying that, rather than Joey Smith and Midaria Bill paying property taxes that go towards new infrastructure in Winemac. It would be Joey Smith Manufacturing Company in Winemac, whose taxes are supporting the new roads, new sidewalks, new lights, whatever go into a development. It might be, we never get to the point where we need to use those, but we at least have that at our disposal if we are in a position, try to finance something like that. So, and in, that's an, so that's an interesting point, you know, using a lot of those chains in Rochester, what I know they've done is that they have a TIF district that exists, at least this was the case, I don't know if it's changed, to promote investment in downtown. But they made this long, narrow sliver along the highway so they could include the Walmart in that TIF district. And that allocation from Walmart, instead of paying to put a stoplight at Walmart or something, is actually funneling back into downtown Rochester. That's a little bit more creative and excessive example, but they've been able to capitalize on the property value they created when Walmart was, I think, when they remodeled or expanded, to put to use in other investment priorities without taking it out of general fund or lit economic development.
Well, I guess one thing that I want to say is, you know, you know, we're using the word TIF district and we're, we're having this open discussion, but no, no means or any way are we approving, are we saying that's a tool. But I don't want it to go out in the public on record that all of a sudden council and stuff's approving TIF districts and standing behind TIF, because I am not at all.
You can't even approve that until you have the redevelopment commission.
Right. But this, you know, we're, we're using these words in a discussion, but it's by no means being passed or being approved that this is a tool that we would possibly ever use. When we have an option to, but not that we would want to use it or wouldn't use it.
So anyhow, we have a motion and a second. I'll say again, any further discussion? All right. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass it. You have the green light to investigate.
Commissioners, you want to support the motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion for the restructuring, restructuring proposal.
This is mainly just to move forward and get better wording from Kevin, to make sure things are hoil. Any other discussion? Home favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Yeah, I wanted to vote twice.
Unless you have any questions for, over anything I just went over. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nathan.
Yep.
And then we have approval and signing of the April 11th joint session. The commissioners, we have a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve versus present it.
Any other discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Council?
I'll entertain a motion from the council to approve and sign the April 11th, 2022 joint session minutes.
Seven minutes. Okay. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Pass.
Okay, another item on the agenda, and basically this letter was, or email was sent by Judge Welker is to the commissioners. I will read through that just to recall your memory. Also, it deals in more cash, so we'll let the council time in as well. But this is for cash, so we'll let the council chime in as well, but this is for a phone, it's from the pretrial release officer, and I'll just read this, her position is required by the state, currently she is 100% paid for by grant funds, the state as of July 1 requires her to respond to issues within 15 minutes. Currently, she is using her personal phone with a phone call app. This does not work unless she has good internet. If she has a county phone and a hotspot, both respond and require, as required, and be able to look up the appropriate contacts, she'll need to respond in 15 minutes. So she had been talking with Fred, and I had talked to Fred today as well, Fred has indicated the cost would be $45 per month, $450 per year, if the phone itself, that no cost. Also, the hotspot, as I understand this, goes on your phone and it's a device that you can hook up to the computer, I don't know if anybody has any experience with the hotspot, but basically, this person needs a phone so she can meet the required 15-minute contact. We even need a motion to approve that purchase.
I would, so moved, I would make that motion, phone.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion, comments? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Counsel, have any follow-up on that comment?
Ultimately, sorry guys.
Didn't want to share tonight, the those insurance premium updates, we have these figures going in, going into your budget time. Hey, Ken and I admit, looking at this renewal, and that was the second, so, second time that came to our council, our commissioners meeting, and presented, it's, um, basically what you have there is a grand total on the back page, and then you have the 2022 premiums on the first side. What I should have done is probably printed off one more page, because let's just look at the first figure there under total of the single plan on the 2022 medical renewal. There is a 7% increase, I'll give you the figure of what it was last year, it was $649.23, up to $689.99, and there's about a 7% as you continue on down. But as you noticed on what I did give you, the cost of this renewal is $31,000, almost $32,000 less, and that's only because of the enrollment, that could go either way still. So if the enrollment was exactly as it was at the beginning of last year, then you would not have that $31,000 savings at this time. And go through the enrollment process and see, you know, where that all, all plays out. So just want to share that with you, so you have it, time for the budget time, mentioned we approved that at the last commissioners meeting, and we had it presented to us. Any questions on that? We don't really have a lot on the property sale update, we are getting it surveyed around that building to try and set off small amount of property around the building to react to people, and that's, that's in the works, and to see how much property that is, once it's, once it's surveyed. And Ken and I had a discussion this afternoon where we have an issue with cardboard, you know, what we do as far as continuing our cardboard pickup service. So I have a statement here from John, this out for me this morning, and something that he had given us before at a commissioner meeting. So as you know, the whole recycling has kind of been running in the red, and we encouraged John to find ways to cut back, talked about major expense as being in the pickup of the cardboard, and the one sheet, he said, "Well, what, he came up the idea, if we charge each store company", this is what he suggested, you can see a weekly cost pickup, that's the one that's stapled together. And on the last page, you talked about what the weekly would be, $1,900, yearly, bring in $9,800, $98,800. And I asked John to kind of put together, you know, a profit loss, that's what's on the single, single page, is payments from the Pratt company up in Falco that he receives where the cardboard goes, and his cost analysis at this time, of course, your fuel going to be more than that now, so that's going up, but he shows just at the current, you know, the payments, you get about $99,000 there, and expenses are 83. His labor is four employees, four hours a day, he runs two trucks at the current time. The other thing that we, that I spoke with John about was, you know, the, the Braun Corporation, where they stop there 10 times a week, and you can see the amount that he would be charging them, and that's about $26,000 a year, so I would assume that they would probably get their own compactor, and possibly even sell direct to Pratt with that kind of volume. So in doing that, you know, that's, that's taking some of his profit away, so then you got to kind of sort back his own profit loss again, if that did happen, but he did email me or text me and said if, if that would happen, Braun Corporation, they would probably just use one truck and two less employees, but the other issue is, you would have to probably have another employee to mail out the billing, because every department fills their own invoices, so every month, you would have this type of paperwork to do, but, you know, if we plan on doing something like this, we need to give all these people on this list a little heads up, some of them might say, "Well, I'll just bring it to the transfer station myself, wouldn't have any pickup problem, some of the smaller ones", so just kind of open to discussion on this.
So, right now, if I'm looking at the single page where it's one-year profit loss, we're saying right now, we've, we've brought in 99,000, let's say, 99,000, we sold $99,000 worth of cardboard so far this year, for one, one-year time period, our, our expenses for that same time period was 80, $84,000.
Correct. But we talked to him earlier too, is, you know, expenses continue to go up, and vehicles are worn out.
That was going to be my, my next thing, I, I would be a little questioning of the costs that are involved, because, I mean, right now, fuel's more than 3.92 a gallon, and, you know, our equipment, we have to replace our equipment, look at electricity, the compactor, all the equipment into that stuff, and save probably more cost of what we're really reflecting.
But right, at this moment, we're making a profit, but we aren't replacing any equipment, that's correct?
Right.
Okay. What would be the breaking point? I mean, we'll still get the income from Pratt if we're still making all of these pickups, so, um, we, we intend to make another $98,000, $98,800 from the companies, we probably won't make that because some companies drop out.
Correct.
But if everyone did, that would be money that would be earmarked for equipment replacement?
Well, you would say, okay, if whatever company dropped out, and they continue to bring their cardboard, rather than have it picked up, then yeah, that just adds to the profit side, your income would come higher than what your expenses. And some of them, there's probably no way that they would do that, but others that are here in town and close to the facility would do, and.
But it's good to know that they're making a profit right now on cardboard, but you're right, we didn't.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to say, the quick numbers make it look like we're making a profit, I would say if we did a true audit, I'm not saying we're losing, but I would say them numbers a lot closer.
Right, right, right.
So again, this is just, doesn't have to be, I just wanted to present it tonight, where we can still discuss it, and I think John was going to come, and then he had a different commitment, so might be available to him to do your next council meeting, and let his, I know what his concerns are, he's, he's going to do my billing, that's an added expense, so.
And this, this could be part of our budget discussion, present something.
That's what I told John, it needed to be done before you got into budget time, and I was, you know, surprised, maybe Mike and Maurice were too, when it came back as, as a profit, because when he kind of explained it to us the first time, he thought that this was area of burn, so it's.
I always understood that it was about $100,000 in the hole up here.
So that's, that's the whole, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, and the cardboard, cardboard is the main, only one that has this type in.
It's the main, it's the main.
And cardboard is a moving target, as far as the price, yeah, it fluctuates. Yes.
And I, well, I don't know whether that was figured, figured into the numbers, like it says, you know, labor, says repairs and stuff, we bail the cardboard, we have fences and bailing wire and stuff like that, hydraulic, you know, I've, I don't know if the repairs are just reflecting of the trucks, or, or what, so I said, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it's the right thing or the wrong thing, but I, I think you'd have to do a little tighter audit of what equipment's used in, of what the cost of the equipment is, you know, what electricity the equipment uses, so forth and so on, for the, for real profit loss.
Yeah. When we talked with him, you know, this was, just think, you know, they're running all over the county, but that's, but they're still making money doing it, but equipment's wearing out and so on, so some of these questions we can put back to John, because, and this was just a very quick audit of his own, and Mike, even I know the, probably the wire that they put the bales in is certainly probably going up, well, we'll continue to work with John on that and get a clearer understanding of what our expenses truly are there. Anything else, other than the cause from the council or commissioners? Do we have a motion to adjourn from the commissioners?
Yeah, I make a motion to, oh, wait a minute, Gary.
Gary.
I just want to inform both commissioners and council that the parking lot possibly is scheduled for like the week of July 18th to the 22nd.
Aye. Aye, so we would have to basically not use that between the 18th and 22nd, so, okay.
He was not coming to Winemac that week.
Okay.
What company was hired? Thank you.
Did we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll do that again, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, home favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, the council will close their joint session.